Good evening. Can you hear me in the back? Good evening, thank you for being here for tonight's Parkway School Board meeting. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll open the regular meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic our home, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize a new partnership with St. Luke's Hospital and Parkway's 16 Energy Star Schools. At this time, please welcome Jennifer, Dr. Jennifer Stanfield, Director of Choice Programs, to introduce our guests from St. Luke's Hospital.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Squartino, Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. I'm so pleased to be here tonight to highlight a new partnership with St. Luke's Hospital here in Chesterfield. Five years ago, as many of you are aware, we started our pre-professional health sciences academy in partnership with the Special School District of St. Louis County and Barnes Jewish West County Hospital. And since then, we have had many students interested in entering the healthcare industry and participating in this experiential learning opportunity. And in this vibrant healthcare industry, finding clinical space for students is difficult. And so, in the summer of 2017, we approached St. Luke's Hospital, Dr. Marty and I, and we met with them, and they were eager to figure out a way to make this work for our students. So, we are so excited tonight to have Sharon Merzloft and Kate Myers here from St. Luke's. You guys can join me. And we will be launching a second section of our pre-professional health sciences academy in August, serving an additional 13 students. So, we've been able to double our capacity in that strand. So, we are very excited and appreciative of their partnership, and we'd like to thank you again.
Well, I want to thank the Parkway School District for approaching St. Luke's Hospital for this honor. I have to say, when our President Christine Candio heard about the opportunity, there wasn't even discussion. She said, "We are going to do this. This is the kind of work that we should be doing in the community to connect." And of course, we see this as an integral partnership, not just this year, but in the future, and also for the future of healthcare in our community. As most of you know, there's a shortage of healthcare providers, and that shortage is looming in the decades ahead. So, everything that we can do to encourage these smart, bright, enthusiastic young people to pursue healthcare as a career means so much for the health of our country, and it means so much for the strength of healthcare in the St. Louis region. So, we are delighted to join our esteemed colleague in healthcare, BJC, to be a part of the pre-professional health sciences academy. Thanks so much.
I just want to say, I just, I can't tell you how excited we are. This is a wonderful partnership, and as Jennifer said, we are running short of spaces. Every year, we have so many applicants, and so, this really provides opportunities for 15, 18 more students each year to be part. And just to give you an idea, it's a commitment because second semester, our students shadow health professionals. So, this is a, really a commitment by the, by this hospital, as it is with BJC. And it's just a wonderful opportunity. Our students right now in the healthcare academy are recruited by universities, Mizzou among them, because of the experiences they've had. So, we're very, very delighted. So, again, thank you, St. Luke's, thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
Please welcome Rick Luters, Director of Purchasing and Sustainability, to introduce our Energy Star Schools.
Good evening. So, now that it's April and it's Earth Day month, we have a great thing to celebrate. But I want to give a little bit of history. Long before the contemporary movement to go green, Parkway has led the way with energy conservation. Since 1991, Parkway has worked to continually improve and save energy, which in turn saves taxpayer dollars and reduces our district's impact on the environment. Our effort to improve continues. Parkway School District participates in a voluntary benchmarking initiative known as Energy Star. This is a logo most of us recognize on new appliances, electronic devices, indicating that they are certified to be an energy-efficient version of that product. Many people don't know that buildings can also be certified as energy-efficient as well. What this represents is that the building is within the top 25% of buildings nationwide with regards to energy efficiency. When Parkway first began benchmarking buildings, energy use with Energy Star in 2008, there were only two schools that were eligible to receive certification in that first year, which by the way, were the first two schools within the St. Louis region from a public K-12. Those schools were Karma Trails and Pyramid Elementary Schools. Today, we are recognizing 16 of Parkway schools that have received Energy Star certification for this year. The collaborative efforts of Parkway's operations team, along with these and other, with these and our schools' efforts, have resulted in a nearly 30% energy reduction since 2008 across the districts. Additionally, if Parkway would have not cut any energy use since 2008, we would have spent another $1.5 million in utility costs. However, through the implementation of new technologies such as upgraded HVAC equipment, advanced IT settings, improved insulation roof systems, efficient kitchen equipment, next-generation lighting technologies, and mindful behaviors within our schools, Parkway has saved over $1.5 million this most recent year, and over 11,500 metric tons of carbon dioxide in 2017 as compared to 2008. Tonight, we recognize the following schools for achieving this national recognition for energy efficiency. If the representative from each school could please come and shake hands with Superintendent and Board of Education when I call your school. Barrett's Elementary, BelReva Elementary, Karma Trails Elementary, Craig Elementary, Burn Ridge High School, Green Trails Elementary, Hannah Woods Elementary, Henry Elementary, High Croft Ridge Elementary, McKelvey Elementary, Parkway Central High School, Parkway Northeast Middle School, Parkway South Middle School, Pyramid Elementary, River Bend Elementary, and Shenandoah Valley Elementary. Congratulations to our schools and our district efforts for this renowned achievement.
Thank you all for joining us. We're honored to have you with us tonight and keep up the great work being energy efficient. At this time, we'll take a quick break, and we'll resume the board meeting shortly. Glad we didn't put a one in there for one.
Surprise.
Yeah. No, just, you know, Beth had several, how many years was she president? Total? Three or four?
Four, I guess, four.
Well, she made it look easy. I'm reading off the script. Nikki sent it to me this morning, and I thought, "Oh, I've got time, I can go through this like 10 times and at least memorize a little bit of it." No. It was like, one time I skimmed through it, and that was it. And I've heard it, you know, plenty of times, but...
Hey, this is probably a question for later, but just, today was the first day that I gave an email to you. If somebody like...
You know, sorry. We're sorry. We have a lot of things to do. I didn't have time for that.
You can probably thank them for their own information that you guys normally do, but we just think of normal...
Yeah, I always just said...
But don't ever like get in...
I always just said, you know, "Thanks for reaching out, I appreciate you, and appreciate to get your input," and we'll make sure that you... I always said, "I will share this with my colleagues," and we can officially apply it to the board. In fact, I can, I can send you...
No, I, I...
Yeah.
Right. I want to make sure I can play books or something like that.
Okay, Jeff, shall we get it rolling? Yep. Where's Sidir? And Debbie? Where's Debbie? She's coming. Okay, thank you all. 6.01, Addendum to Agenda Item 10.07, Approval of Personnel Items. Per the citizen's signup sheet, we are going to have those of you who signed up to speak tonight come forward one by one. I will read your name, and as we have done before, we will determine the number of minutes based on the number of citizen statements we have tonight. You'll have two minutes to make a statement. If you would like to discuss a student discipline matter or a personnel, employee personnel matter, we ask that you not mention the person's name out of respect or privacy of those involved. You may share individual names separately with the board in writing or email correspondence. And as always, we will expect you to conduct yourselves in an appropriate manner, and we'll proceed with the first name. That is Caitlin Culver.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Culver. I'm from Southwest Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade. I'd like to ask the Board of Education to look behind you at the accountability flag because I believe that is something that Parkway needs to emphasize. And I believe that is because a lot of students aren't exactly held for their actions accountably as it's usually more of a group punishment rather than the individual punishment, and I think that should be changed because at school, there are many students that I believe are good and well-behaved, and I don't like to see my peers be punished collectively when a lot of the time, it is one or two students causing a disruption during class or in the school day. Recently, I read about a school in London called Ian McCardo High School, and it is an all-boys boarding school for boys in London who are deemed unteachable and are supposedly destined for prison. And the school has a policy where there aren't any strict rules, and many of those boys leave the school going to college and getting good jobs, such as being a lawyer or a doctor. I think Parkway doesn't necessarily need to enforce more rules for the students, but instead, just get a bit of a different discipline policy to help students be more accountable for their actions. Because at Ian McCardo High School, the boys are all held accountable for their learning and for their actions, and it's no group punishment, it's always the individual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Shawna Barton.
My name is Shawna Barton, and this is my husband Glenn. We live at 1042 Tree Top Trail Drive, Manchester, Missouri 63021. I brought with me today the Parkway School District Organizational Chart. This is located at Board Policy cca.bp. As many here know, the organizational chart for a company or school reflects the leadership structure and reporting roles. At the top of Parkway's organization chart, it states Parkway Students, Parents, Community, Schools, Staff. Directly below the Students and Parents is the Board of Education, you all, and below, that is Dr. Marty and his staff. We are here today with many concerned Parkway parents because we feel that after the last board meeting on March 14th, we are still not being heard. The communications we received focused on avoiding the discussion, ignoring our concerns, and continuing personnel practices that harm and injure our kids. There has been no good-faith dialogue other than to try to move on. Because of this, we have no choice but to ask this board to review the district's personnel practices. We ask that you determine whether these practices are being conducted in accordance with Board Policy and the spirit of the policy. You are the only ones who can give us assurances that 20-year careers are not being thrown away with little review by this board. Until this happens, we will not move on. We will be a fixture in this building. This is what an engaged parent community looks like. We're here to stay until Board Policy cca.bp is actually followed by Dr. Marty and this board. Thank you.
If I could just remind you that we refrain from applause in between the speakers. Next up is Gina Hagan.
My name is Gina Hagan. I reside at 863 Heron Woods Drive, Manchester, Mo. I am here today to discuss Parkway Board Policy cbc.bp with you all. Cbc.bp lays out the duties of the superintendent and specifically states that the superintendent shall recommend for discharge any employee whose services or personnel, personal activities are so unsatisfactory as to warrant such action, subject to approval by the Board of Education. I want to highlight that last section again, that discharge has to be subject to the approval of the Board of Education. This policy also states that assignment of administrative personnel shall be subject to approval by the Board of Education. The spirit of Board Policy is that the superintendent is not authorized to unilaterally make personnel decisions that amount to discharge or reassignment without the board's approval. This is equally true when the practical effort of how voluntary resignations that are presented to the board deny substantive review. Parkway Board Policies are intended to provide open dialogue and communication between staff, administration, and the board. While voluntary resignations are framed as a humane approach, it is nothing more than having to choose your poison and giving up your right to review. If personnel matters are consistently brought to the board as voluntary resignations, where is the opportunity for the staff side of the story to be told? How is the spirit of the Board Policies met when employees are voluntold to resign? This is one of the many reasons why we are here today, asking the board to review Parkway's personnel policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tanya Regelsberger.
Good evening, I'm Tanya Regelsberger, 811 Bublin Lane. Last week, at a listening session, our top administrators said we lost 19 administrators over the past seven years, and that teachers and school administrators were replaceable. Then, in that same conversation, we're told that top administrative positions were getting harder to fill. Let that sink in for a minute. Let's be clear, this is not a personnel issue, it's a leadership issue. How is any employee supposed to feel valued after hearing they are so replaceable? Our teachers are on the frontlines every day, doing a job that is harder and harder as the more and more demands are placed upon them. What kind of loyalty can be expected of our teachers, administrators, and staff when the top administration so openly expresses this type of cavalier attitude? Perhaps this explains why our district dropped three places in the state ranking of test scores this year to 25th place, behind Lindbergh, Clayton, Ladue, Kirkwood, Rockwood, and Francis Howell. If our teachers are so easily replaceable, what's their inspiration to teach well? To our elected voice, we ask you to use your authority to change course. Our district is in a precarious situation with regard to our top administration, who openly views our teachers, school administrators, and staff as disposable. Please be our voice, be the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan Gardner.
Jonathan Gardner, 16 Merrimack Forest, Baldwin, Missouri 63021. The Parkway School District is not a Fortune 500 company. While there may be similarities, at the end of the day, it's a public school. Why is that relevant? Because the decisions that are made affect the lives of our children, parents, and the community. We are the shareholders of the school district. We voted on a board that passed policies stating how the district should be run. We need personnel practices that comply with Board Policy and the spirit of those policies. We need decision-making that prioritizes our kids. Our Board Policies reflect those principles, and that's why personnel matters should not be made by one or two people in the conference room, especially when 20-year careers are at risk and hundreds of children's lives can be adversely affected. Board Policy kb.bp and kcb.bp emphasize the importance of parental involvement in decision-making. Over the last few weeks, we've repeatedly heard that personnel matters are closed and that we must trust the process. This is why we are asking this board to review how these policies are being implemented and to review the administration's personnel practices. Our school is suffering from the unilateral actions of the central office. Recently, there has been a surface level of parental involvement in selecting a new building administrator. While I did appreciate being a part of the interview process, it did feel like a rushed process. I am asking that you develop a more systematic approach to ensure parents contribute to the hiring process in addition to, in a more valuable way. In accordance with Policy KCBP, you can develop a hiring advisory committee that meets annually to determine the needs of our building, the characteristics of the leaders we need, and to inform the questions that we want teacher and administrator candidates to answer. These are the types of personnel practices that we ask the board to review. When schools are having such difficulty finding great talent, we also need to ensure the policies are adhered to in order to retain the exceptional talent that the support of hundreds of parents at the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Wagner.
My name is Chris Wagner. I reside at 770 Strafford Riz Drive, Baldwin, 63021. One of the fundamental tenets of our democracy is innocent until proven guilty. Board Policy GBKA.G and GBKA.bp reflect this principle. Policy GBKA.G states that through the grievance procedure, good communication between the district teaching and support staff, administrative staff, and board is essential for the effective operation of our schools. Policy GBKA.bp is the grievance procedure for administrators, and it prohibits retaliation for any administrator who participates in it and grants them the right to have the board consider and decide the grievance. I'm here today because I'm concerned that the district's personnel practices have had the effect of denying administrators and teachers the right to have their discharges reviewed by the board. Policy CBC.bp expressly limits the superintendent's powers to only recommending discharge, subject to board approval. This is vastly different than the superintendent having the authority to take action that effectively carries out the discharge. There are two sides to every story, and we are concerned that this board is only being presented with one side of the story, that presented by the superintendent and his staff. The use of voluntary resignations by the superintendent may seem humane, however, that's not the case when it comes to the cost of waiving their right to a hearing before the board. It is not a humane approach when it ends an 18-year career without due process. In those instances, it is not actually voluntary. It is coercive. This is but another example of why we ask the board to act on behalf of our community to review our district's personnel policies and practices. We ask that you determine if these practices align with Board Policy and the spirit of these policies, which is promoting communication. This includes voluntary resignations, reassignments, discharges, and demotions. We ask that this review process be conducted by an independent third party, be placed on the agenda for discussion at the next board meeting, with a report to the community as to the process and findings, with appropriate redactions. Thank you.
Next is Jerry Persha.
My name is Jerry Persha, 1427 Westbrook Terrace Drive. When my daughter finishes elementary school, she will have had at least four school principals. At a time when a young child needs stability, the rug keeps getting yanked out from under her. This kind of turnover adversely affects our children and their grades. The swapping of unfamiliar teachers, principals, and policies is like some administrative gumball machine. Each year, the parents are unprepared for which flavor of policy that's going to drop from that machine. The teachers and principals have left our district are evidence of the turmoil caused. Principals have been moved from school to school, forced to resign, and fired under suspect circumstances. Staff members have been bullied into quickly signing paperwork and resigning, therefore eliminating their due process. Their replacements are being hurried through the verification process to make sure there's no position still available for the original position holder. And to add to the issue, pressuring phone calls have even been placed to parents who have questioned these actions. These practices are completely unacceptable for a respectable Parkway administration. Ignoring this behavior only opens the district to potential lawsuits and casts a shadow on its reputation. I ask you, what desirable applicant would covet employment in a school district when they'd be treated this way? In light of all these improprieties, I urge the board to consider halting any disciplinary action against employees of the school district, at least until a thorough review of all recent and current resignations, demotions, or dismissals have taken place. The responsibility of this caustic environment falls directly on the Human Resources Officer and Superintendent, and I believe warrants board investigation. I ask the board to please help us fix the situation.
Next, we have Ellen Ewing.
My name is Ellen Ewing. I reside at 1535 Rosewood Terrace Drive, Baldwin, Missouri 63021. Under Board Policy BBA.bp, this board has three major functions: formulate and adopt policy, appoint the superintendent, and oversee the superintendent by appraising the performance of the superintendent. I'm here today to ask this board to fulfill its duty of oversight over the superintendent. Throughout the district, we see personnel decisions by the superintendent and his staff that deny teachers and administrators their grievance rights under Board Policy GBKA.G and GBKA.bp. How is this done? By coercing and forcing so-called voluntary resignations. Board Policy CBC.bp expressly states that the superintendent can only recommend for discharge any employee whose services or personnel activities are so unsatisfactory as to warrant such action, subject to approval by the Board of Education. Once again, subject to approval by the Board of Education. The superintendent violates these policies by forcing administrators to either choose to voluntarily resign or be walked out and placed on administrative leave immediately, effectively blackballed in the area for teaching jobs and risk losing their pensions. This bullying tactic denies them, denies this board rather, the right to review discharges and frames them as, "Well, it's what the administrator wants to resign." How can we tell our students to stop bullying when our superintendent himself is behaving as a bully? CBC.bp was implemented to provide oversight over the superintendent. He does not get to be the sole arbiter of personnel discharges, especially when it results in four administrators in six years. This is not a healthy environment for our teachers, it is not a healthy environment for our administrators, and most importantly, it is not a healthy environment for our children.
Thank you, that's the end of your time. Sorry. Next, we have Clayton Stockwell.
My name's Clay Stockwell. I reside at 633 Fox Hill Estates Drive of Baldwin, Missouri. I am here to discuss Board Policy BED.bp. This policy states the closed records policy for the Parkway School District. Specifically, it states district employees who fail to keep closed information or closed meetings confidential may be disciplined or terminated. The list of closed topics under Section 3 expressly includes hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed. the employees discussed. Given that administrators are apparently held to the highest of ethical standards, despite these standards not being written in board policy, we expect our superintendent to be held at the same high standard. This is especially true with regard to policies and clear, that are clear and unambiguous, pardon me. I have with me three different affidavits from parents over in Hollow that detail a meeting with Dr. Marty wherein he openly discussed closed topics regarding the discipline of our administrator. Details were discussed regarding the factual circumstances of her situation, why the discipline was imposed, her personnel, her personal, pardon me, her personnel record history, and why he was so troubled by this situation. I brought these copies of affidavits. Sufficient concerns and issues have been brought to the attention of Parkway Board today, and what we'd like to do is, we'd like the board to have, conduct an independent investigation. This is what we're asking for: a third party to review personnel practices that have taken place during the past five years across the Parkway District by central administration to determine whether they are in compliance with board policies. We'd like a response in writing no later than Friday, April 27th, as to whether a review will be conducted, and if not, why the board is going to not conduct the review. If the board conducts a review, then we want to know in writing who will conduct that review, the nature and extent of the review, and when the review will be conducted. And at the conclusion of the review, a published report appropriately re-
Thank you, Mr. Stockwell. Thank you all for your statements. You each will receive a reply in writing from the board. Next, Agenda Item 8.0. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for April 11th, 2018? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. 9.0, Calendar of Meetings. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 p.m. 9.02, Board Liaison Reports. Let's start down there. What's your deal?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So I had the opportunity of attending the all-district orchestra competition at Queenie, and that was my first time, and it was amazing. I mean, you have no idea. The whole Queenie, it gets packed with about 1,000 kids from all over the district and about 3,000 to 4,000 in audience. It was mind-blowing, perfect. The music was so great that I really wanted to hear more, but, you know, it was, but overall, it was great. You should, you know, if you get a chance, please be part of that, see how our kids play the music, and it's just mind-blowing. So thanks, you know, to the administrator for organizing that. I appreciate that.
I want an election.
A couple of weeks ago, Sudhir and I participated in the Student Services Subcommittee meeting, and two things were talked about. One was a program that we have been implementing in oral health care for kids in our schools. Comtree, a local federally qualified health center, selected three Parkway schools in which to provide oral health screening as well as services to students. The number of kids in our schools who don't have dental care, aren't seeing dentists, and have unmet dental needs is enormous, which is not shocking, but the numbers are staggering. And so luckily, we've been able to partner with that organization to provide some much-needed services to our kids on school property with the permission of their parents, of course, and meet some of those needs. So I think that's just a really great example of some of the ways that we meet students' needs beyond their educational needs. If you're in mouth pain, you can't focus, and so kids start getting in trouble for other things. So I just want to highlight that partnership. We're looking at ways to expand it, but obviously, it's grant-funded from the group providing the service. So they're also setting up a fund, it's not set up yet, to help students pay for services that can't be provided for free. They'll be selling tooth fairy pillows, so if any of y'all have young kids that could use them, they'll be selling those to help raise funds for kids who can't afford it, as well as letters from the tooth fairies. So if you buy a pillow and a letter, that's how they'll be fundraising for that. So coming soon, but it was great to hear about that work, and I think it's something we should be proud of.
And I agree too with Chris about that. It was amazing, and we are all in for our students' health, because that's the primary thing. We want to make sure it's available to our students. So thank you.
Mr. Todd, Dr. Serratino, and I attended the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Subcommittee Meeting. We are continuing to review our board policies related to our curriculum, and so there's probably about 45 to 60 policies that we've been reviewing since the fall. So it's been a bit of an arduous process, but it's very important that we make sure that we're, we are working with the Missouri School Board Association, MSBA, in this process to make sure that our curriculum is aligned with federal and state policies as well. So we rely on them to help us with that. There are several policies related to special education and some other matters that are a little more unique to Parkway in how those curriculum efforts are implemented, so we're still working through some of that. But all in all, we're making our way through the policies and look forward to bringing that to the full board when it's time with the rest of the policies that the other board members are reviewing.
Well, I've had an interesting past three months. It's been very educational, and I'll say, it all ended well last Tuesday, but I think one of the things I'm most proud about is the fact that we got out a huge turnout last week's vote. And I hope that continues going forward, because you look at the past five years, it's growing. But we need to have parents and residents get more involved in the Parkway School Board election. So let's take what we did this past Tuesday, let's do it again next year. Thank you.
I attended with Mr. Todd. We attended the Parkway, Project Parkway meeting this past week, and we began with just discussion with the group in terms of just an icebreaker, and we paired up and talked about, you know, some of the exciting things. What do we think are the exciting things that are happening in Parkway this past year? And then we went around the group and kind of shared those. It's amazing what has happened. It's just really, really amazing, and we're really proud of all that. So many great things have happened, along with the fact that we have two schools that are leader-in-me lighthouse schools, and that is Henry and Bell Reeves. So we celebrated those two schools at our meeting as well. Dr. Pacchini talked basically about three areas, primarily building community, character education, and personalized learning. So we had a lot of discussion about that, and at our tables, we gave her some input in terms of we, what we thought about each of those areas. Mr. Paul Tandy talked about the bond and the feedback from the community at the last feedback session. And what really surfaced more than anything in this past session was school security, and rightly so. So there'll be a lot of attention given to that, as we all know. So it's really great. I have served on the Project Parkway for I don't know how many years. It's great to see it working very, very well for the district in terms of developing goals that are meaningful goals with objectives that are accomplished. So thank you very much.
And as Debbie mentioned, the work in reviewing the policies, Section I, is coming along very well. I think we have one more meeting before the end of the year, and hopefully, we'll be all through those. Sam mentioned the Project Parkway Steering Committee. That's the, kind of the precursor to next Monday's Project Parkway meeting, so I'd invite all of you to join us for the full Project Parkway meeting. Again, that information will be shared with regard to where we're headed with the bond issue, all the items that have been earmarked for inclusion in that, and as concerned Parkway parents, I would, I would hope you'd want to be a part of that process. One of the things that, that we'll hear actually later tonight, I think, is some data on a recent survey that we do kind of to prepare for the bond issue, and that's to do a survey in the community and get some feedback as to how Parkway is doing as far as communication and, and our image and things like that, to make sure we're prepared for that bond issue in the election. And so it's fascinating data. I've seen a little bit of it, and I invite you to stick around to take a look at that. I was also fortunate to spend last evening with Dr. Marty and a couple other people at the middle school and high school honors band concert at Missouri Baptist College, and they did an amazing job. It had been a while since I had been in that auditorium, but it's a fabulous place to hear a concert, and these kids spent hours yesterday in clinics with different conductors and learning new music, and then performing in the evening last night, and it was just a great testament to their passion for the arts and their desire to continue the music that they've been so fortunate to be a part of in Parkway. That's all I've got to give.
I just wanted to add, I had a really wonderful experience on Monday with Amy Yurkin Coats, who was our Director of Talent Development. As you know, we honored a lot of National Board Certified Teachers, I think in December, January, and we now have 40 nationally-board certified teachers, but there are 30 more in the pipeline. And so Amy brought together our nationally-certified teachers and the new candidates, and it was wonderful to hear what motivates people to pursue national boards. It's a lot of work. It's a two-year process now, and people are talking about, you know, career opportunities, wanting to renew themselves, and already having their master's degree but looking to have a new opportunity to learn. So very, very proud. It was, it was great to hear many of our teachers who've been teaching over 20 years, 25 years, really wanting to seek in the last several years of their career the national board certification. So I think we're going to see over the next couple of years, more folks coming that's nationally-certified, nationally-board certified. And I'll just say, a couple years ago, we had maybe eight to 10. We've Liz Morrison and now Amy have really upped that number of nationally-board certified teachers, and it's great to see that number pursuing.
9.03, Board Subcommittee Reports. I do not believe we have any. 9.04, Upcoming Subcommittee Meetings. Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting, as I mentioned, will be held next Monday night, April 16th, at 6:30 p.m. at South High School. The TLA Board Subcommittee Meeting will meet at 4:30 p.m. on Wednesday, April 25th, at ISC. Details of the meetings will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meetings. 10.0, Action Items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the April 11th, 2018 Board Materials? I need a motion first for the, yeah. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the April 11th, 2018 Board Materials.
So move.
Okay. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed?
There is Agenda Item 10.24.
With the exception of Consent Item 10.24, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 10.24, Approval of St. Louis County Police Three-Year Service Agreement. Fred? May I have Fred Crawford, who's our Chief of Security, join us at the podium?
Good evening.
Hi. You have questions?
Yes, I do. So for everyone, this is our contract with, for SRO service from St. Louis County Police Department, and we have several different contracts for SROs. And, excuse me, school resource officers. So these are police officers who are assigned to our junior highs and our high schools. Obviously, school security is a big topic right now, and I think we need to acknowledge that the presence of armed law enforcement gives a lot of us peace of mind about our kids being at school, but I think we also need to acknowledge that for many in our community, it does not, and that there are certain groups of student for which armed people do not make them feel safer. I would highlight our black students, our LGBT students, and some of our students with behavioral or emotional disorders. Looking at all of us, none of us are black. To my knowledge, none of us are members of the LGBT community, and I think that we have varying levels of experience with kids who have social and emotional needs. So I think, given all that, given our makeup, we really need to be vigilant in putting on the table the fact that this perspective exists in our community. So this contract is set to start June 1st. I think we have a little bit of time, and I'd like to ask for two things to be considered in light of, in light of that. So two things. I have notes, sorry. And I put this all under the context that I think we need to be thinking about security and thinking about these people's roles in the context of our mission for education, in the context of our school environment and what we're trying to do. We're trying to educate kids, all kids, make all kids feel that they have a safe place to come and learn. So Article 3.1 outlines some of the duties of the SROs in our schools, from St. Louis County. It's pretty vague, and I think we could make some more distinctions between the role of the SRO in improving security and the fact that this is not a place to be involved in school discipline, that school discipline, misconduct, kind of your average day-to-day need to intervene with a student is, should be handled by school personnel. When there's criminal action, when there's suspected things of that, they should be brought in as appropriate, but for the most part, we need to make distinctions between one and half, and I think we could clarify that. I think that's also probably good for the SROs, who are likely called into scenarios that they don't feel particularly comfortable being in, but don't have a good way to push back and to think about, wait, is this my role here? So I'd like us to think about 3.1, specifically Items B and C under that, and if we could clarify that a little bit. The other thing I'd like to think about is training. I think that the more that we can have our SROs embedded in our school environment, and again, mission of school is to educate so all students feel safe, the SROs are members of our school communities. They're not somebody who's just kind of over here doing their job. They're in our schools every day. We're making a lot of investments in social justice training for our, for our schools, full school. We're also investing in trauma-informed training for our school communities. I would like to see in our contract that our SROs will be part of that, those trauma-informed trainings and part of those social justice trainings. I know that that's happened in other school districts, and my understanding is that's been a very positive experience for the teachers, for the SROs themselves, for the administrators, for the counselors, for the full staff, and ultimately, for the kids. So, you know, again, what I'd like to ask, since this contract is not set to start until June 1st, I'd like to ask that we consider making a couple of adjustments that I just outlined, and looking at this again in our main meeting.
Fred, can you describe the, the training that, and tell me if there's different training between St. Louis County versus some of the specific municipalities that we have in some of our schools? Because this doesn't, this doesn't encompass all of our schools, right?
Yes, no.
So can you speak to what type of training that the SROs have as it pertains to some of the stuff Christie was asking?
Well, as a, as a commissioned police officer, all officers in St. Louis County undergo a series of training that's regulated by the Post, the Police Officer Standards and Training Commission. And that training today and in the last five years has included a variety of approaches to people with disabilities, people that may have some mental defect that the officer has to work with and recognize to be able to, to work with them as professionally as possible. With regards to the SRO, that's an enhanced training. Every SRO that comes to Parkway has to have a 40-hour basic SRO training, which includes dealing with a variety of issues, especially at the school, working with administrators, working with programs, and understanding the clientele within the school and the various emotional and issues that occur with the children. And they also undergo an advanced SRO training. In the meantime, we have routine meetings with our SROs from all the departments with the family court, St. Louis Family Court, and we bring in our Director of Discipline, who speaks with the SROs about proper techniques, et cetera.
Any other questions, Chris?
One of the other questions I would have is, we've been talking about trying to increase the number of SROs, particularly in our elementary schools. Have there been discussions opening up yet with St. Louis County to offer additional SROs to our elementary schools in particular, or even middle schools and high schools? And would that, could that be incorporated into this contract as well?
As a matter of fact, we've had that discussion recently. We've asked our municipalities, and we just had a meeting. So we're, we're asking for some additional help in the short term, perhaps dismissals and arrival time, so we're having that discussion. Great question, because we certainly, but that depends, of course, on their ability to deliver that. You know, every, we have nine municipalities and the county to work with, so everybody's going to have a different, different staffing, different focus, but we certainly have been talking about that with them. They've been very, very, since Sandy Hook, a lot of the municipalities- They've been very, very, since Sandy Hook, a lot of the municipalities stepped up and provided much more surveillance of our elementary schools besides the full-time SROs. But that, but that's certainly something we can have discussion with.
So, if this contract isn't set to begin until June 1st, 2018, would we have time if we did not act on it tonight and maybe put it off until the May 9th Board of Education meeting?
I would think so. I would think that it would be a good idea for specifics to be identified so we can meet with Lieutenant Schaefer, who's the Municipal Services Representative for the County Police, and Lieutenant Schaefer and I can sit down, and we can certainly go over your concerns with regards to their application, their training, and their more specific duties that would satisfy what I'm hearing tonight from the Board.
There are some model policies out there that I'd be happy to share with you and happy to talk to you more about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Fred, one more question. Is this the same agreement that other school districts have? Is it just a boilerplate agreement that all the districts have and are signed and...
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is that going to create any issues if we have our own separate agreement with the county?
I think every agreement has the opportunity for us to talk with the representatives of that, of that department and, and kind of customize things that the Board would be interested in, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I just want to ask Ms. Davis, I, I think your, your questions are really good at this time we're in, but are you also understanding that we don't want to lose our, our SROs? And so, we may have to talk about this in a long-term vein, are you, because I certainly, we have such a great relationship, I don't want to jeopardize that.
Yeah. Is, if they're in our schools and they're part of our communities, let's, you know, I don't see any, I am hard pressed to see a reason why they couldn't participate in some of those full-school trainings that we're already doing.
And they may be, I, in some cases, they may have been involved.
I think it'd be good to see it.
I mean, maybe not the county, but maybe some, but we certainly, but I think your, your questions are very good. I just do not want to get into a situation, as we're talking about, that we're, you know, we're trying to negotiate separately, but I think these are good points, and I think they would be respectful of our questions.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I do think it's a longer-term conversation. The full extent is a longer-term conversation, but I think that there's some tweaks we could make now.
I would also, as we think about this, to invite the school principals to have this discussion, because they're the ones also that deal directly with their SRO and may have input on the discipline issue versus the SRO, you know, where that, that line is drawn. And so, I would think it would be imperative that we involve our building administrators in those discussions.
I think they're any good useful for everybody.
Right, absolutely.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
I need that the... The decision on Agenda Item 10.24.
I have a motion to table Consent Item 10.24. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Okay, motion carries 7-0. Action Items, 11.0, Approval of Curriculum Revisions K-12 Science. We have several guests with us tonight.
We do have several guests, and thank you so much for having us tonight, President Todd, Vice President Sorrentino. Several years ago, House Bill 1490 became law, what began as House Bill 1490 became law in Missouri, which required the revision of standards in each of our content areas. Since that time, we've been auditing our curriculum for alignment to those updated standards and proposing any revisions or needed changes. As part of that work, we've, we have presented in your Board Materials revisions to the K-12 science framework. We're excited about many of these changes as they help us make a more mission-aligned curriculum that allows students to more fully engage in the ever-changing world. In addition to those changes that are in your Board Materials to the K-12 science curriculum, we've also presented the K-5 math, math curriculum, I'm sorry, the K-5 science curriculum map that lays out more of what we're doing in our elementary schools or what we propose to do pending your approval. To give you some more information about that, I'd like to hand it over to our K-5 STEM Coordinator, Jennifer Obdelazin.
Hi, good evening. Until this point, our elementary science program was focused on content acquisition and experimental design. With the K-5 curriculum update and resource adoption tonight, we are making an important shift to a STEM-based education. This shift provides experiences for all students to be critical thinkers and real-world problem solvers. Project Lead the Way and MYSI are two resources that allow our students to be collaborative and become tech-literate. These resources ensure our students can respond to the ever-changing world. They are inquiry-based, hands-on, and completely integrate science, technology, engineering, and math, while allowing our students to access learning beyond the classroom. If you have any other questions, I am available.
But I still will go on record to just bring that. When was the last time our curriculum was revised?
Okay, so, our science curriculum, science program went through evaluation in 2012, in 2012, and in response to that evaluation, some minor revisions were made in 2013 and 14. However, the curriculum writing process right now is under review with the Board Subcommittee. The process that we take used to say we rewrite curriculum every six years. However, after the Curriculum Action Team came together last year, we determined that there should be, there should be other triggers that say, okay, maybe we should reevaluate our curriculum and revise. And so, in response to House Bill 1490, that's what prompted this revision. So, 2012 was the last time we went through program evaluation.
Thank you. And then, are we making sure that we are following up all the, you know, laws and standards from the Missouri Board of Education?
So, House Bill 1490 went to adopt the Missouri learning standards, and so, this current curriculum revision aligns all of our units of study to the Missouri learning standards, which inherently means we're following the law.
Thank you.
What we're doing tonight, we're only approving K through 5.
Okay, so there's, it's a, there's three answers, there's three parts to that answer. Okay. Stephanie, Jenny, and I worked together to create the K-12 science curriculum framework, because we strongly believed that we needed to be vertically aligned. However, K-5 also went on to write the curriculum map. So, I went a step further with the Science Action Team to go through and write the enduring understandings and the scope and sequence for what lays out elementary science. And K-612 has, gave you a timeline that was about when they're going to complete their curriculum map with their scope and sequence and their courses. And then the third part, elementary science also presented with, to you, resource adoption to help us write the units completely. So, we have a curriculum framework, we have a curriculum map. Now, we need to work with the support of Project Lead the Way and MYSI to have the map and the framework turn into actual units, which then dictate what the students will be doing in the classroom. Does that...
You know, in terms of, you know, how much time does an elementary school provide for science in these grade level?
That's, that's an excellent question. And what I've learned is that it probably not enough until this point. So, with the adoption of these two resources, it really allows our teachers to take a more interdisciplinary approach to science and allows our students to acquire knowledge by doing all those wonderful things that the Listening Tour said that our community wants our students to be engaged with. And so, it, it really varies from building to building, but what we see is about an hour a day spent between science and social studies. So, either they do a half an hour of each of those, or on Monday, let's say, they'll do an hour of science, then Tuesday will be an hour of social studies, between 45 minutes and an hour.
Well, the next question lies on the fact, what are the facilities that should be available for STEM and for the hands-on activities? I mean, do we really have lab facilities and classrooms at the elementary level?
Good question. So, because, because I don't want to think of it as, because a passion of mine is ensuring that all of our experiences are provided to all students, I don't want it to be a facility-based program or a lab-based program. I want the resources to be in the classroom. So, that was an essential component of what I was looking for with the Science Action Team when we went through and started to evaluate other resources. Project Lead the Way and MYSI both are, they're amazing programs that include amazing, I don't, not products, what's the word, like, no, like consumables, things for our students to use in their classrooms. So, the materials will be in all classrooms, accessible to all students.
And the third question lies with the training of teachers. You've taken this curriculum to a higher level, so, you know, are teachers going to get specific training to teach the program?
Absolutely. Actually, taking the curriculum to a higher level is the first step in ensuring that our students have amazing experiences, right? We have to provide professional development for our teachers. So, for Project Lead the Way, in order to teach Project Lead the Way in your classroom, you have to become a certified Project Lead the Way teacher. And in order to become a certified Project Lead the Way teacher, you have to have two full days of professional development. So, for all of our elementary, there's about 400 elementary teachers, we are providing one day of professional development in the summer, and then the second day of the training for the program will be on August 10th, which is the Back to School District PD Day. So, that will ensure that all of our teachers get trained to use the program. But Parkway is taking it a step further. We are dedicating an amount of $13,000 from our, the elementary professional development budget to ensure that our instructional coaches become lead teachers for Project Lead the Way. So, we're giving our instructional coaches an additional, two full days of Project Lead the Way training, so that we can ensure in every building, there's at least one lead teacher. So, when teachers have a question or feel like they need support, they have someone right on their building level that they could reach out to.
Yeah, great, thank you.
See, I just wanted to remember back at the retreat last June, we did a lot of, I think these three brought us a lot of, that was the kind of activities that, you know, are really much more, you don't necessarily need a lab, but it's the hands-on approach.
Thank you.
Are second graders not going to get to learn the life cycle of the butterfly anymore?
No, they will, so, the, the magic, what, one of the things that, one of the things that I recognized when I went through and evaluated Parkway's current science curriculum was there was a lot of repetition. I felt like the life cycle was one of those things. I myself have two children in the district, and I feel like we learn the life cycle a lot, and we learn about plants a lot. So, I wanted to make sure we had equal representation of life science, physical science, and earth science. I feel like that was missing in our current program, and so, the new curriculum ensures that we're adequately covering all of the standards, life, physical, and earth. So, yes, they'll still learn about butterflies, but other stuff too.
I'm glad you brought up the life sciences, because it seemed like in, in one of the documents that I looked at on the rubric that you had shown, that life sciences was missing in fifth grade. So, is that, it was earth, planetary, physical, and earth or something?
So, all of the standards, I can assure you that all of the standards are covered. They, they, the curriculum process that I took to make sure that we were covering all of the standards was grouping them and deciding which group of standards is age-appropriate, you know, K-2, 3, 5, so they, we may not have much life science in fifth grade, but that means there's an abundance of life science K-4, and that there's more earth science in fifth grade. They're all covered, though.
And my other question is about, with Project Lead the Way, my understa, so I need some education with this, is that it's a rather, it could be challenging.
Rigorous.
So, I'm, I'm wondering how all of our students in K through 5 will adapt to a more rigorous, challenging curriculum with, with this.
With amazing teachers. I think that we have, we have an extremely rigorous ELA curriculum, we have an extremely rigorous math curriculum, and our students have met the challenge. They have come really far, and are, because we have amazing teachers. And so, I approach this knowing that all students can do this. And I actually believe, now, this is my personal opinion, that when a student, let's say a student is not achieving in school, if you put a computer science module in their hands, you're going to watch them blossom. If you give them a chance to be hands-on, to ask questions, to be real-world based, you may see that student soar in places that that child was not able to soar earlier. But I do think, I agree, it is rigorous. I myself would want nothing less for my own children.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, no.
So, don't, don't take me...
I agree with you.
I just, I just don't want to see kids get, you know, turned off at such a young age. It's too challenging, because they have to write a bunch of stuff, and they're just not quite ready for it. So, being able to, to be flexible within, and...
So, both of the resources, I hear exactly what you're saying. Both of the resources are research-based and developmentally appropriate. The people that created them have an extensive amount of knowledge about what is developmentally appropriate for a six-year-old to be doing in a science classroom. That's first of all. The second point is that they're performance-based. So, a student, we may be studying about forces and matter, and in that, we're building airplanes, and we're actually building airplanes, and we're flying airplanes, and we're talking about mass and velocity and all of those things that impact, and the way, impact the way the plane flies. And the way the student's success is measured is in his or her design. So, I mean, nothing greater than a growth mindset. We look at where you were at the beginning and what your design looks like at the end, and the effort that you put in and what you learned along the way to measure your success. And then, we allow you to revise the design and get better. So, there's never a definite, okay, you're done. It always allows for student growth, which was critical when I was looking for a hands-on science program. Thank you.
Since we do have, we've welcomed two new Board members tonight, I do want to just follow up on Ms. Hopper's question and talk about our process for curriculum revision, just so you're all aware of what that is. We begin by bringing you, as the Board, our curriculum framework. By that, we mean what are the big ideas and what are the things that we're going to teach within this content area? So, presented to you, just to name a few things, it understands that students need to have that scientists recognize and analyze spatial and mathematical relationships in order to see the relationship between and among organisms and places, or essential questions like, how do rates of change affect systems, or how do structures affect functions? These are obviously really big ideas. We take those big ideas from the curriculum framework, we then turn them into a curriculum map to say, okay, at each grade level, then, here are the more specific things that we will include, and then we turn it over to our teachers to actually design the units and the type of instruction that happens in our classrooms. So, that's just the overall process. So, we present for your approval really is that big framework. Is this the big framework that we want to make sure that our students are learning, or are these the big ideas that we want to make sure that they have in each of these content areas? So, though we're also presenting a K-5 curriculum map today, as they are developed, we will also be sharing with you a 6 through 8 curriculum map and a 9 through 12 curriculum map in these content areas, and that timeline was also presented to you in your materials.
Any other questions? May I have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education approved the curriculum revisions for K-12 science as presented in the April 11th, 2018 Board Meeting Materials? Roll call, Nick. Now, roll call, Nick.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Dr. Sorrentino?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. 11.02. 11.02, Elementary Science Resource Adoption. May I have a motion and a second to the Board of... Don't go far.
You're not done yet, sorry.
Read the question, okay. May I have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education approved $359,476.60 to Project Lead the Way from 2017, 2018 TLA Textbook Matrix Funds. Lead the Way from 2017, 2018 TLA textbook matrix funds, and $70,560 to MYSI from 2017, 2018 TLA textbook matrix funds, to provide elementary science resources for every elementary student, and that the Board of Education approves $17,400 from 2017, 2018 science professional development TLA funds, $13,000 from, $13,000 from 2017, 2018 Title II A funds, and $52,600 from 2018, 2019 Title II A funds, to support two full days of professional development for teachers.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Dr. Cioratino?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. 12.0, policy review, we have none. 13.0, 13.01, facilities planning report, results of community opinion survey. Mr. Paul Tandy, come join us and share the results of the community opinion survey.
Well, good evening. Before I ask Rod to present the report, I wanted to give just a little brief background, particularly for the new board members. For probably at least 25 years or so, we've had a bond, a facilities-related bond proposal on the ballot about every four to five years. It takes us four to five summers to get those projects done. And so we've been in that cycle for a long time, close to 30 years now. At least in my tenure, I've been here 18 years, and I think it predated me. We've utilized a firm, an independent firm like Unicom A R C, to reach out to the broader community, to assess the degree to which the priorities that have been identified through the planning process are in line with what the broader community would like to see. It's difficult to get a lot of those folks to come into face-to-face meetings to talk about roofs and HVACs in the schools because it just doesn't directly affect them. But it affects their property values and the quality of life in the community, so we'd like to reach out to them. And again, make sure that what we're proposing is to assess the degree to which it's in line with what they would like to see. And no pressure to Dr. Wright, but we've used them for many, many years. His firm specializes in this and just does a phenomenal job. They're very, very accurate, and we've always had really good results, or accurate results from his survey work. So they just recently completed the most recent one, and with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wright to give you a summary of the findings.
Good evening, and thanks, Paul. I've reached a point in my life where it's many, many, many years, and young women open doors for me at Starbucks. Very depressing. So I get a better laugh for that. I worked long and hard on that opening line up there, and it didn't work very well. Let me cover the survey research fairly quickly. I know you've got a busy agenda tonight, and congratulations to the new board members. Let me tell you a little bit about the methodology that we used, and I should add, we're delighted to be here again. It's been since 2014. It's amazing how quickly it goes by. It kind of reminds me of that saying, the days are long, the years are short. Seems like it wasn't that long ago. Anyhow, we did the field work in March of this year. We did 506 completed interviews. The sample was drawn from a, the voter registration list from St. Louis County that we appended phone numbers to. For the statistical geeks in the audience, that's a sampling error of 4.4% at the 95% confidence interval. A lot of people misunderstand sampling error in terms of thinking that things are only good at a plus or minus 5%, but I would remind you that the error is bell-shaped in distribution, so it's a lot more likely to be a percent off than it is 5% off. Kind of a pet peeve of mine on how things are reported in the newspaper. All the way out here tonight, I kept trying to think of some bad news to give you out of the survey, so you wouldn't think that everything was good, and I couldn't think of anything. The survey results are extraordinarily positive, and I oftentimes don't get the luxury of saying that to school districts. The slide you're looking at now, we have kind of a warm-up question on the survey, asking people to evaluate the schools, both in the state of Missouri and their own local schools, much the way a teacher would, A, B, C, D, F, or N, and fail, I'm sorry, A, B, C, D, and fail. These are questions that are asked in the Gallup poll survey every year, so you can kind of standardize these. When I was here in 2014, I noted that I didn't think the numbers could get any better, that over the years, the numbers, and in 2014, to give you an example, the As were 46.5%, the Bs 36.5%. So there was an increase in the As and Bs, meaning a decrease in the other categories. So they did get marginally better, and we do survey work all over the country for school districts, and we've not really seen for a K-12 school district numbers that rival these by any stretch of the imagination. Every once in a while, I think I mentioned this last time, on the North Shore, Chicago, with some of those very high-end elementary districts, you get numbers in this range. But these are really, these are really good, and something the district should be very happy about. You're thinking about a bond proposal, and so early in the survey, before people knew a lot about what the survey was about, we asked about $110 million bond proposal. We did not put in this question that it would be a no-tax-rate-increase proposal. We just kind of put it on their code like this to see what the reactions were. Overall, 69.2% said that they would favor it. Opposition was 24.3. Again, that compares to four years ago. It was 61.7, so the numbers have bumped quite a little bit from 2014. We went ahead and then asked the people who were undecided or opposed, how they would feel about the proposal, knowing that there was a no-tax-rate-increase element to the proposal. When Paul saw this chart, it gave him a little bit of heartburn because he saw the 36%. But I want to remind you, that's 36% of the people who originally said that they were undecided or opposed, not the entire sample. And so if you do the math, that added overall, in terms of the total sample, of about 11% to that number you saw early, which bumps it up to kind of the rarefied strata of 80%. I'm not telling you, you're going to get 80% on the proposal, but the numbers on this are really quite good, and I think, as you'll see later when we go through the reconsideration question, are comfortably in the high 60 range. We asked some questions, and when you get the report, you'll be able to see some time series data on these, on just district performance in a number of different categories. And across the board, district performance is really quite high. And let me explain this table to you. The first column is the percent excellent. The second column is the percent excellent combined with good, and then the not-so-good and pores are at the end. So if you want to add to 100%, it's the second column, the third column, and the don't knows are people that didn't answer that are not on the chart. And we do that so you can see kind of the intensity of opinion in that excellent category. But as you go down that excellent or good category line, you see that all the numbers are two-thirds and higher. Even spending tax dollars efficiently is at 67.9%. And survey respondents don't like saying that a lot of times. They may rate you high across the board, but they don't think you do a very good job handling money, so that's always the lower one. But comparatively, that number is quite high. I also wanted to make note of question seven up there involving the community and important decisions that affect the community. Kind of across the board, that number is in the 70% range. There's some additional questions that kind of get at that issue. And again, that's quite good. That's another one of those questions where survey respondents often want to say, a lot of times with legitimacy, that decisions are being made top-down, and no one is coming to the community in kind of a transparent way, involving the community, important decision-making decisions. So again, I thought that reflected very positively on the district. Another page of these, building confidence among citizens and staff members, communications. Again, that's 68. That's again, close to that 70% level that I was talking about. On question 11, you'll note through the survey, when we talk about protecting the community's investment in school buildings, the numbers are pretty darn high. And I think that's language that works really well in a district like this, particularly when you consider what the replacement cost is of all your buildings. It's got to be an astronomical number. And talking to people about protecting that investment, I think is always a good communications message to get out with the electorate. You'll see the numbers on safety are all higher than anything else. If you'll remember, the shooting in Florida was on March, I'm sorry, February 14th, and we were doing survey work, field work, in March. It was on the nightly news every night in terms of what was going on, and I'm sure it drove those numbers up a little bit. Next, we had some agree/disagree statements about the district. These are in the same format as that other table, where there's the strong agree and then the combined agree in that second column. We get excellent value for the taxes we pay, nearly 80%. I wanted to point out question 14 in particular. A lot of times, people don't differentiate very well on surveys. And what I mean by that, if things are going well, everything is good. If things are not going so well, everything is bad. But a large percentage of people agreed with, many of the district's buildings are getting old and needed, I'm sorry, old and need maintenance, repair, and renovation. That number was at 71% or almost 70, almost 71%, which means the message about needing to pay some attention to buildings has gotten out, but it has not undermined confidence in the performance of the district in other areas. And that sometimes happens. We've worked for a lot of districts where the buildings need some work, and people assume that everything needs work. But that's not the case in the survey by any stretch of the imagination. Down at the bottom, you'll see another engagement and communications question at that 70% level. A good job of listening. There's another page of these. Again, you'll see the numbers are very high. What I wanted to point out on this one is, well, a couple, the last three, where you see that percent strong agree really pop up. I'm willing to support building improvements to make sure the quality of education is equal to that or other districts in the area. Building, and then the safety and security question is question number 19. And then in question 20, where you see that 67.9% strong agree, it's that word investment again. And I wanted to point out, it's important to keep our school buildings up to date and in good condition to protect our community's investment in those facilities. Again, every time that word was used on the survey, you saw results like that. You're considering a bunch of different building or facility improvements, and we asked about a number of those. We varied the format of the question a little bit to using a scale. On the scale, a seven meant it was a top priority, a one meant it was a low priority. They could use any number between one and seven. In the chart, the first column are the sevens, the second column are the five, sixes, and sevens, kind of the priority under the scale, and the third column are the one, twos, and threes. What's missing are the fours, and that'll all be in the final report when we get there. You will see across the board, in terms of either looking at top priority or high priority, they want you to do everything. There is some differentiation in results. I mean, for example, on the page you're looking at now, question 25 is reduce costs and conserve energy with things like geothermal heating and cooling. It's still a 63.6 in the five, sixes, and sevens, and if I was going to ask that question, again, I'd take the word geothermal out. It's just my intuition is, people don't know what that is, and it may, or at least completely understand it, and it may, if you just ask about reducing costs by conserving energy, may have gotten a different kind of response on that. You know, it's interesting how they respond to words and survey questions, so I wanted to point that out. Again, there's another page of these. I think the lowest priority, but still with 54.8, saying it's a high priority, was just, you know, sidewalks and parking lot areas repaving. All the rest of them here are at 75% and higher in terms of improvements to make. So kind of the point here, there's no real Achilles' heel to the kinds of things that you're looking at. All the items for building improvements tested well. We next asked a question about how informed people are about the district. The 82.1% say very well are somewhat informed. I think it's probably a high watermark for the district. I need to go back and look at previous surveys for that. Normally, in St. Louis County, that number, I won't name a school district, but usually is in the 50s or 60s, not in the 80s. That tends to be the case. That just is a statement about, you know, the communications going out. We asked where people got information. This is always an interesting question. And we asked it twice. You'll see it's, if it's in your notes, we asked, you know, where do you get most information from the district? And if they were able to answer the question, we said, where else? So there was two responses. And I'm not going to cover these charts in detail, but the interesting thing about this is how you got to be multimedia. People are getting information from all over the place, and none of them particularly dominate. And we'll do this in the report, but you can do it in your head, is looking down the page and looking how much of that is coming from your communications department, and the variety of things that they do. You know, none of them particularly overwhelming dominant, but when you add all the things together, it turns into a pretty big number in terms of kind of who's responsible for those communications. Next, we ask about people's involvement in Project Parkway. We had 2% say very involved, another nine saying somewhat involved, about 50% said they didn't know much about it. That's pretty standard for school districts that are doing community engagement, and I guess if you'd like to see one number kind of come down a little, it would be that 50.8% that said that they didn't know much about it. But there's more work yet to be done between now and November, so that number is likely to move. And then lastly, next to last, we asked just some agree/disagree questions about possible proposal that you might put on the ballot. Again, the first question has that word investment in it, and you had 83.1% agreeing. In the middle, 39, the question about safety and security, you know, that just popped off the chart, given the circumstances. I thought it was really interesting, 38. There is a predisposition to agree, to agree/disagree questions, if that makes sense. And the statement, our school buildings are fine as they are. I can't afford to pay more taxes, no matter how good the cost. 35.9 agreed with that. It is not uncommon for a school district to get 50, 60, even 65% support on a possible bond proposal, but 65% of the people would agree with that. And that's when I always tell people, I don't have to say it tonight, if you're looking for consistency in life, don't do public opinion research. People hold a lot of contradictory attitudes, and that's one of the classic examples of that. Question 40, the district did a great job implementing the first phase. Three out of four agreed with that. 41, I just wanted to pull again, the investment or investing in school improvements will benefit many future generations of students to come, and point out again that word. There is another page of these statements about possible proposals. 42 is a statement about property values. 43 is interesting, where you got, even though people are very supportive of what you're doing, they want more information. 74% said, I need a lot more information on what building improvements are planned before I would support a bond proposal. Kind of an interesting result, given the rest of the survey questions that we asked. And I won't read the rest of these questions, but you can see that there's no shortage of things to communicate to the community about the need for the proposal and to get them thinking about why they, how they may react to it. At the very end of the survey, before the demographic questions, we asked what we call a reconsideration question. By now, people have answered, you know, 40-some-odd questions about the district. So we said, as we talked earlier, the district's thinking about putting a $110 million bond proposal on the ballot to fund Phase Two of its facility improvement program. And then we asked people, you know, whether they would favor or not favor that, and the results to that was 74.6% favor. The comparable number in 2014 was 66.3 on that reconsideration. That, in a lot of respects, represents kind of best-case scenario, you know, in terms of if everything would break exactly right. And in terms of a starting point, that earlier number that we talked about, the 69% is what you would hang your hat on right now. When you get the final report, you'll see a lot of the demographics by gender and zip code and some of the other questions that we asked. We have checked those. We have checked those and make sure that they kind of reflect the demographics of the community. For example, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 35% had kids 18 or younger in their homes, so it's mostly the sample, 65% that don't fall into that category, and the gender is evenly split. So, the demographics look right, and of course, the survey kind of matches up in results nicely with the 2014. But you'll be getting a full report with cross tabs and lots of other things that we'll deliver to Paul and will be available to anybody that wants to see it. You know, this is, at this stage, I've been in this business for a long time, the one thing you don't want to do is take these for granted. You know, I know Dr. Marty's been a superintendent for a little while and has probably seen districts where these numbers can get away pretty quickly if you don't stay kind of attentive to things. And once you build them up this high, if something happens and they go down, it takes a long time to get it back to where it was. We've done work for Clayton School District as long as we have Parkway. And Chris Tenel, their communications director, did a presentation for Professional Association showing what happened to confidence in the district and the board and performance numbers when they, you probably won't remember when this happened, but when the Y down middle school controversy hit that district. And numbers plummeted across the board, 15% and 20%. Took the district about 10 years to get them back up to where they were, which is kind of an interesting story about how public opinion works. It can go away fast, takes forever, not forever, it takes a long time to rebuild. So, with that, let me stop and see if you have any questions. Again, I want to thank you on behalf of our whole agency for doing work for this district. You've been great friends of ours, and we always try to do the best we can for everybody, but we kind of do a little extra, I think, for Parkway because of our relationship here. Thanks.
Thank you. I think these were some of the great, you know, findings you did. The only concern I have or question, basically, not even a concern, is how many, 506 completed interviews, does that mean it's like a survey, basically?
I'm sure that doesn't mean...
Is that a survey, some kind of a survey, or you had a personal interviews?
Yeah, those are completed from beginning to end, yeah. And we were under contract to do 500. And if you're on the next to the last question and somebody hangs up, it doesn't count.
Their phone.
So, their phone interview, basically?
Yeah, phone, yes.
Oh, okay. And the only reason why I said 506, because there are so many places where there's a disagree, total disagree percent, and that's about 20%. So, when you say total disagree, about 20%, that's like 100 people not agreeing to something. So, I was thinking for a school district like Parkway, where there are 17,000 students, I think we would rather have a little more sample size than just 500, so that we can have a better, accurate information.
That's an interesting question about sampling. To cut the sampling error in half, you have to quadruple the sample. So, to go from 4.4 margin of error to 2.2, you've got to do 2,500 interviews, 2,000 interviews, I'm sorry. The reason you see a lot of sample sizes in the 500 to 600 range is that it gives you a very good margin of error, even when you do the breakdowns, and it's fairly cost-effective. The only reason that you would do a lot larger sample is how you want to slice and dice the data. And, for example, in Rittner School District, where we've done a lot of work, they used to want to break them down by elementary attendance area. If we broke down survey results by elementary attendance area here, you would at least have to do 75 to 100 for every attendance area, and it would explode the sample. So, the decision is based on overall accuracy and how you want to analyze the data. And again, that's why whether you're doing a survey statewide or here, 500 is a pretty nice number. The reason you do larger samples statewide is a lot of times you're breaking down in media by media markets, and you have to have a representative sample for the various media markets, so...
And it's good to get an oversight and idea, you know, holistic overview, but as you said, if you have to slice and dice to get a better picture, I would not say 500 is enough.
Depends what, what you're slicing and dicing, yeah.
The point is, we are not here analyzing the data, we are just trying to get the idea of what the feeling is. So, I think I'm okay with that, yeah.
Right. If you're breaking down that data in more than five or six demographic categories, sample's probably not.
Yeah.
And again, on how that breaks, so let's say you do the sample, and you're not paying attention to gender, and you're looking at male, female, but 450 of the responses are female and 50 are male, well, then you got a problem. And one reason why we maintain quotas on gender is because women are much better citizens, and they're much more likely to respond to surveys.
And I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm glad you mentioned that, that you had a good proposal.
Telling the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Now, if you don't do quota sampling on gender, it turns out about 65, 35, female, male.
Rod, I know you do surveys over the country, and I know, you know, I've been following a little bit my old state of Wisconsin and what's happening with bonds and referendums. There's a kind of a shift, isn't there? I mean, there's a lot more support, seemingly at the local level, for bond work, and are you seeing, am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, I think in general, for a lot of kind of big-picture national reasons, the timing for these things, these things, school proposals right now is pretty good. You know, there's, you know, I'm old enough to have worked the 1994 election, which was the Newt Gingrich Contract with America, and I can guarantee you, not many school proposals passed on that ballot because the pendulum was swinging way to the right. All the data right now is showing the pendulum swinging way to the left, and that's going to help school district proposals. And I'm not saying that partisan-wise that's the case. That's one element that's going on. The other really interesting element to watch right now, I made the joke about women being good citizenship, but the polling data on female millennials is absolutely fascinating. And they are a whole bunch different than the guys on almost any question you look at. And we are working with clients, because a lot of them are getting to be your moms. So, we're working with a lot of our school districts to talk about communication strategies towards millennials in general, but particularly the women. The partisan breakdown is nothing short of staggering on that data, if you look into it. So, short answer, though, I think that, you know, a lot can change between now and November, but right now, it looks like a good cycle. It looks like the, kind of the mirror image of '94, in fact. You know, you just had today, I'm sure you heard the news, Speaker of the House isn't running for reelection. Pretty unprecedented.
Did you say the interviews were done by telephone?
Yes.
Is it landlines, cell phones, or both?
Both. The, it's really interesting how the business changes over the years. The issue with cell phones now is not that you can't get them, it's that you get too many. I don't know how many of you, this is information coming from the company we buy phone numbers from. I don't know how many of you are getting a lot of spam on your nuisance calls on your cell phones. Anybody that has turned over their cellphone to their credit card company or bank for early fraud warnings, they have in turn sold those numbers, Bank of America, Citibank, you name it. And so, when you buy cell phones now, just like for my house, instead of being a situation where they were all protected and you couldn't get any, now you get six, because we've got six that come to our house. The other thing is, when the banks started selling them, they got attached to your home address instead of your work address, because they got attached to your bank account. So, we have to do strategies now to try to figure out which of the numbers you want to call first, because you've got so many of them in the house. It's kind of an interesting and different problem. And so, you'll end up with a household, you may have a landline, you may have six other numbers that go with it. So, you probably don't want me to get on the weeds in that.
No, I find that...
The other interesting thing about the cellphone numbers, you have to hand dial them. You can't auto-dial them. It's illegal. So, that's driven up our cost a little bit.
All right, last question from me, at least. How long does a survey like that take to conduct?
We time these out to take somewhere between 12 and 15 minutes. If you would go back to earlier surveys in the 90s for this district and many others, we were going out with 70, up to 80 questions. But the terminate rate, one of the things that's changed in our industry, it's not so much the completion rate, but the terminate rate. And what I mean by that is you get so far and somebody hangs up on you. And that's expensive for me, because I'm promising completed interviews. And if somebody hangs up on question 54, I got to start all over again. So, we track that terminate rate, and we kind of push it as far as we can, because each question is cheaper to ask. So, if you ask 45 questions, but you could have asked 55 questions, it really doesn't add much to the cost if you can keep people on the phone and they don't hang up on you. So, I think not just us, but virtually anybody in the business house, trying to go out at the most about 15 minutes. Unless, they pay people, and there's some of that going on now, too, where you get them on the phone, say, "If you stay on the phone with me for 20, 25 minutes, you'll get a $50 check." That's not good policy for a school district, I don't think.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Reck.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Enjoyed it.
Okay, 14.0, we have a work session for our budget. I invite Patty Bedborough to join us, and Brian Whittle.
Hey, Jeff.
Actually, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and we'll be right back. You've got four minutes and 45 seconds.
It's over there.
Actually, there is.
So, if you go down this hallway here, turn there, turn there. No, 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 go back down.
Nikki?
That one.
Thanks for being here, Paul.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, I took a plane, I never thought it would happen.
Miley John's on my way.
I was digging into the thing there.
We're going to spend a lot of money.
We still wouldn't be able to direct everybody.
Yeah, I noticed that about 10 minutes ago, it kicked on. Okay, are we, are we ready?
Have you been to any other board meetings?
No.
I have a friend that's on the board, Kirkwood.
It's different, all the way around. Everybody does business different. It's interesting. They all follow a particular order.
Right.
But it's fascinating to me how every district's a little bit different.
Good with it, that list, or...
No, it's just the differences in, you know, how they do business, how they break different items up on the agenda. You know, it's just interesting to me.
Brian, you working on it?
I had no idea what the oath was until I got up there.
What's that?
I had no idea what the oath was, I was going to keep reading until I got up there. I was like, wow.
What am I going to do? I hope I like this.
I don't know, I don't know.
You keep one and I keep one.
Oh, you're right there. I used to look in over there for you. So, we need Kevin and Keith. Kevin's in the room.
Kevin's there, our water, she's empty.
Water?
Our is empty.
Oh, is it? Is this coffee?
Yes.
If I drank it now, I would be up till 3:00 in the morning.
She wasn't aware of breakdowns.
When we look at new construction, you can see that in years such as 2013, 2014, we had very low new construction reported. So that was the tail end of the recession. As the economy has gotten better, so has the construction that has taken place in our district. For this upcoming year, we are estimating $20 million in new construction. This past year, one of the large projects that is included in there is a Phase III of the Monsanto project that's based off of Swingley Ridge Road. In future years, you'll see that we have an estimated growth in new construction. Some of those are known properties that are coming off of their Chapter 100 abatements, and the other 50% of that abatement becomes new construction as it comes online. So here is our chart for assessed valuation. As you can see, in 2008, we had very high assessed valuation, about $4.7 billion. We're getting to that point now where we're finally recovered from the recession. But as you can tell, that's a lot of added new construction along the way to increase that property value as well. We do believe that we will have ongoing growth in our assessed valuation. This is a very attractive area not only to live, but also to work. So it has great value. Overall, putting that together, we do believe we will have a growth overall of 1.77% in our property tax line. So when we're looking at operating revenues, so this is revenues that are going into the general and the special teachers fund. Revenues into debt service and/or capital projects is listed separately. So this is just a summary of operating revenues. Other components that make up our revenues include a thing that we can now add in is interest rates. So interest rates have almost doubled in the last year compared to the year prior. We're able to earn investments, or earn earnings on our investments, but we still don't have year-round investments because we still have our borrowings that we have to do with the TANs in the fall. When we look at the sales tax line or Proposition C, we do have a slight growth in there of about $5 per weighted average daily attendance. We do have a slight decrease in our VST revenue, so that is our revenues from the students that are part of the voluntary inter-district choice corporation, that are students that reside in the city of St. Louis, but then are Parkway students and transported here daily. We've estimated conservatively on the decrease of that revenue, the actual revenue and student population may vary based on our estimates. When we look at other local revenue, we have a portion in there as payments in lieu of taxes, which are an increase from pilot payments from our Chapter 100 abatement projects. This is offset, though, by a portion of the M&amp;M surcharge that is now recorded in our property tax line versus our M&amp;M surcharge line per DSE requirements. You will see state funding, slight growth based on our estimated growth in our enrollment, but a continued cut to the transportation budget. We believe that is going to be ongoing. Slight decrease in federal funding due to the elimination of the grant carryforwards. We believe we'll spend those grant carryforwards in this year, and we won't have carryforwards in the future year. And we'll also have that matching of expenditures that offset that. So it's actually a zero impact net in the budget. And then we need to continue to monitor the impact of the TD Ameritrade/Scott Trade purchase to see the impact on our financial institution tax line and our county stock tax line. We believe that that merger may possibly negatively impact our revenues. So our essential breakdown of our revenues total local, 90.27%. Our state, 4.89%. So most people have a perception that we receive a lot of money from the state. Parkway receives 4.89%, so less than 5% is actually received from the state. Federal, 2.34%. County revenues, 1.32, and other, 1.18%. And Brian will bring you some news on expenditures.
So we always start our expenditures with enrollment because that drives our biggest expenditures, which is salaries and benefits, 85% of our budget. So we're looking at modest growth over the next few years, you know, 50 to 60 students a year. And the reason for that is our VST student numbers dropping, as Patty alluded to, with the related revenue decreasing. So just kind of on a...
But Brian, I think maybe just come back here a second. The other, just so the board is aware, we're gonna be wrapping up the Riverview Gardens-Normandy numbers. You'll see them going down, but by 2021, we will no longer have students coming because we're winding. Those districts are accredited now, so just maybe save a question from later, so.
All right, thank you. And then this just kind of shows the trend over time. And as you can see, the last few years, we had a growth, you know, around 150 a year, and then that's gonna slow down some. So we do have that relate. You know, it's more of a modest growth in salary we're looking at. And we take these projections from a report Dr. Nathan Tyson does every fall, and, you know, I've been here four years now, we've put this together, and every year he seems to get very close. I think he's magic, I don't know. So. And then related to that enrollment growth is an increase in teaching staff. As I stated, we have a modest growth coming up this year, so we're only looking at an additional three FTE in our teaching staff compared to 12 we had at last year. And we don't just say, oh, there's 60 new students, we have to add three teachers. The HR has a great spreadsheet Amy Joyce and Phil put together where they look at it by school and by grade level to make sure we're meeting our requirement by grade level. So, you know, maybe part of our growth is only really one or two at a few schools, and we're not gonna need to add a teacher at those schools necessarily. So we don't look at it in net necessarily. We also look at it at a very granular level to decide if we're gonna add staff. The budget you're gonna see includes the restructuring of the reading positions, the instructional coaches, and the behavioral specialists. And also, as you may know, we're currently offering an incentive plan. It's, you know, a one-year option for people that meet the requirements to retire, and we'll provide the benefits for a year. Our budget does not include any potential savings from that, only because we don't know how many people are gonna take advantage of it. So, you know, my personal hope is we come back in the fall with savings from that. And also, we have just turnover in general that we don't necessarily know about. We forecast some, but we never know what the exact number's gonna be this early in the year. So. And then now that we know kind of what our expected FTE increase is, the other thing we look at is the staff's salary increases by a percent. And it looks like the chart was a little off, but this, yeah, on our sheets it's that. The CWA and teachers, we know the salary increased through 2020, and nurses, we know for the next, or through 2019, we don't know through 2020. The nurses' increase may look lower, if you were seeing it on a straight line, than everyone else, but that's because they averaged 9% over three years, with the first year being higher, and that was this current school year. So, but over time, we're not giving them a smaller raise than all the other staffing, it's just their three-year contract was front-loaded with the higher rates. And support staff and the administrators for 2020, we don't know yet. You know, we base that on our fiscal conditions and the raises of the other groups, so. And then, so after salary, which I stated is about 63% of our budget, our next biggest expense is benefits, which is 23%, and it grows year after year. Currently, our medical plan is experiencing a surplus, which is great. We actually, this year, was the first year in a long time we didn't increase our contribution by 5%. We only increased it by 4%, which I think is a positive. Hopefully, we can get another year or two like that. Our retirement contribution rates are frozen. That is the rates we pay to the state retirement system for teachers, which is 14.5%, and then support staff, which is 6.86%. So, I don't know, for everyone new, that's what we have to pay for retirement to the state. And the teachers and the staff also pay that same amount out of their salary. So we are currently forecasting a 4% growth in costs for medical, and we're hoping to have the near-site, well, the near-site clinic will open this fall, and we're hoping that leads to some more savings in our medical plan. And the budget also includes savings from our fuel, because we added 10 CNG buses this year. That's gonna lower our diesel fuel cost, and new diesel buses are gonna be more efficient, too, than we had next year. The continued bond work that has improved our energy efficiency, that's in there, too. I think, I don't know if we have a slide, well, we don't have a slide later, but just a few years ago, it was safe, 4.4 million a year, and I think our energy costs are now around 3.4 a year. So we have seen with these bond projects, just in the work of Eric Weathers, just a tremendous reduction in our energy costs. So this year, we introduced zero-based budgeting for all operations departments. Most, many of us were already doing that, but that just means we, you don't start with what you received last year. You present your needs, you estimate how much those needs are gonna cost, and we budget from there instead of saying you get a flat X amount of dollars year after year. And so, you know, I'll, just as an example, I'll submit my budget to Patty, and she'll review it and approve it. And that's how it works kind of across the district, is everyone is submitting their budget to the supervisors that's reviewed. They might say, yes, you can have this project, no, you cannot have that project. And next year, we are also going to add 10 new diesel buses, and that's, oh, 14, sorry. And that's gonna be partially offset, right? But that comes from a transfer from our operating fund into our capital fund. Here is a sheet that shows the year-over-year growth in each of our categories. Again, salaries is the largest. And you might say, oh, it looked like we had about a 3% average in our raises, but we're only increasing salaries next year by 2.17. And that is because we do anticipate turnover year over year. It's just a factor we always have to deal with. Some years, that growth may only be 1.5%. Other years, it might be 2.5%, but for next year, we're getting closer to that 2.2%. Benefits, about half of our benefit expense is tied directly to salary. So how much salary grows, that's how much your benefit expense for retirement's gonna grow because that's based on individual salaries. The other half is the growth in the medical, dental, and vision cost. And then from there, you'll look down, and you'll see a, these purchase services and supplies and materials, which are our next two biggest expenses. It looks like there's a big decrease in there, but what happens is our current fiscal year 18 budget was increased last fall for money that wasn't spent from the fiscal year 17 budget, so it kind of ups that number. I don't think we're necessarily gonna finish around that $15 million for purchase services. Some of it, we're gonna ask, probably ask to roll over in the fall. That's just because there's items you wanna purchase this year, but they just don't come in in time. You know, we don't, you know, we don't spend to spend, we spend as it's needed. So sometimes we look at it and say, we're gonna put off this purchase till next year, and we'll come in the fall and ask to increase our budget for money that was unspent this year. So we're not, we don't have this 14% decrease in purchase services. I just think our fiscal year 18 budget as it stands now is just higher than what we're actually gonna finish at. I think that's it. All right, here is our, the breakdown kind of you see with revenue.
I think he's magic, I don't know. And then related to that enrollment growth is an increase in teaching staff. As I stated, we have a modest growth coming up this year, so we're only looking at an additional three FTE in our teaching staff compared to 12 we had at last year. And we don't just say, oh, there's 60 new students, we have to add three teachers. We, HR has a great spreadsheet Amy Joyce and Phil put together where they look at it by school and by grade level to make sure we're meeting our requirement by grade level. So, you know, maybe part of our growth is only really one or two at a few schools, and we're not going to need to add a teacher at those schools necessarily. So we don't look at it in net necessarily, we also look at it at a very granular level to decide if we're going to add staff. The budget you're going to see includes the restructuring of the reading positions, the instructional coaches, and the behavioral specialists. And also, as you may know, we're currently offering an incentive plan. It's, you know, a one-year option for people that meet the requirements to retire, and we'll provide the benefits for a year. Our budget does not include any potential savings from that, only because we don't know how many people are going to take advantage of it. So, you know, my personal hope is we come back in the fall with savings from that. And also, we have just turnover in general that we don't necessarily know about. We forecast some, but we never know what the exact number is going to be this early in the year. And then now that we know kind of what our expected FTE increases, the other thing we look at is the staff's salary increases by a percent. And it looks like the chart was a little off, but this, yeah, on our sheets it's not. The CWA and teachers, we know the salary increased through 2020, and nurses, we know for the next, or through 2019, we don't know through 2020. The nurses' increase may look lower, if you were seeing it on a straight line, than everyone else, but that's because they averaged 9 percent over three years with the first year being higher, and that was this current school year. So, but over time, we're not giving them a smaller raise than all the other staffing, it's just their three-year contract was front-loaded with a higher raise. And support staff and the administrators for 2020, we don't know yet. You know, we base that on our fiscal conditions and the raises of the other groups, so... So after salary, which I stated is about 63 percent of our budget, our next biggest expense is benefits, which is 23 percent, and it grows year after year. Currently, our medical plan is experiencing a surplus, which is great. We actually, this year, was the first year in a long time we didn't increase our contribution by 5 percent, we only increased it by 4 percent, which I think is a positive, but hopefully we can get another year or two like that. Our retirement contribution rates are frozen. That is the rates we pay to the state retirement system for teachers, which is 14 and a half percent, and then support staff, which is 6.86 percent. So, I don't know if for everyone new, that's what we have to pay for retirement to the state. And the teachers and the staff also pay that same amount out of their salary. So we are currently forecasting a 4 percent growth in cost for medical, and we're hoping to have the near-site, well, the near-site clinic will open this fall, and we're hoping that leads to some more savings in our medical plan. So, and the budget also includes savings from our fuel, because we had 10 CNG buses this year. That's going to lower our diesel fuel cost, and new diesel buses are going to be more efficient, too, than we had next year. The continued bond work that has improved our energy efficiency, that's in there, too. I think, I don't know if we have a slide, well, we don't have a slide later, but just a few years ago, it would say 4.4 million a year, and I think our energy costs are now around 3.4 a year. So we have seen with these bond projects, just in the work of Eric Weider, is just a tremendous reduction in our energy costs. This year, we introduced zero-based budgeting for all operations departments. Most, many of us were already doing that, but that just means we, you don't start with what you received last year. You present your needs, you estimate how much those needs are going to cost, and we budget from there instead of saying you get a flat X amount of dollars year after year. And, so, you know, I'll, just as an example, I'll submit my budget to Patty, and she'll review it and approve it, and that's how it works kind of across the district, is everyone is submitting their budget to the supervisors, it's reviewed, they might say, yes, you can have this project, no, you cannot have that project. And next year, we are also going to add 10 new diesel buses, and that's, oh, 14, sorry. And that's going to be partially offset, right? But that comes from a transfer from our operating fund into our capital fund. Here is a sheet that shows the year-over-year growth in each of our categories. Again, salaries is the largest, and you might say, oh, it looked like we had about a 3% average in our raises, but we're only increasing salaries next year by 2.17, and that is because we do anticipate turnover year over year. It's just a factor, we always have to deal with some years that growth may only be 1.5 percent, other years it might be 2 and 1/2, but for next year, we're getting closer to that 2.2 percent. Benefits, about half of our benefit expense is tied directly to salary. So how much salary grows, that's how much your benefit expense for retirement is going to grow, because that's based on individual salaries. The other half is the growth in the medical, dental, and fishing cost. And then from there, you'll look down, and you'll see a, these purchase services and supplies and materials, which are our next two biggest expenses. It looks like there's a big decrease in there, but what happens is our current fiscal year 18 budget was increased last fall for money that wasn't spent from the fiscal year 17 budget, so it kind of ups that number. I don't think we're necessarily going to finish around that 15 million for purchase services. Some of it we're going to ask, probably ask to roll over in the fall. That's just because there's items you want to purchase this year, but they just don't come in time, you know, we don't, you know, we don't spend to spend, we spend as it's needed. So sometimes we look at it and say, we're going to put off this purchase till next year, and we'll come in the fall and ask to increase our budget for money that was unspent this year. So we're not, we don't have this 14 percent decrease in purchase services. I just think our fiscal year 18 budget as it stands now is just higher than what we're actually going to finish at. I think that's it. Here is our, the breakdown kind of you see with revenues, student activities, 1 percent. Debt service is very small. The only debt service we have in the operating fund is for copier leases. When you think of the bond, the big debt projects we have in on some of our buses, that is in our debt service fund. So we don't see that being paid out of our operating fund, we see it being paid with a dedicated debt service tax. Purchase services, 5 percent, supply, 7, like we were saying earlier, benefits are at 23 percent, and salaries are at 63 percent. Debt does look higher than some districts if you were ever to compare, but the reason is we do our custodials in-house, our food service in-house, and our buses in-house. So that makes our salaries a little higher, but our purchase services lower than you see elsewhere. And then, so, let Patty talk about when we combine, what happens when we combine those revenue and expenditure numbers.
So when we combine the revenue growth and the growth in the expenditures, we actually end up with a growth in our fund balance that'll hit our target of the 0.25 percent growth. You'll notice on here, too, we do have a transfer to capital projects. That is to cover the buses and other items in capital projects. That is one of our issues currently, is we have a very low capital projects fund balance.
Patty, can I just stop you for the sake of our new board members?
Absolutely.
You keep talking about the 0.25, so you might want to just explain that.
So beginning in, I'm going to say fiscal year 15, we initiated a policy to conscientiously grow our fund balance. And in a future slide, we'll actually show the history of our fund balance percentage. So the fund balance percentage is a percentage of the total fund balance divided by the total operating expenditure, so essentially saying, what percentage of the year will your fund balance take you through? So right now, we're targeting that we'll have a 20 percent balance by the end of next year, so 1/5 of the year our cash balances would take us through if we receive no other funding. So it's very important to have cash balances. Currently, we actually run out of cash, which may sound frightening, and I know, Matt, you and I have spoken about this when we met earlier, but it sounds frightening, but what we're able to do is utilize a mechanism called TANs, or a tax anticipation note. So it's pre-borrowing on our tax revenue that's received in the months of December, January, and of course, we pay it back as soon as we receive our first large distribution from St. Louis County. It is a common practice, I'll say, but it's because when we were going into, I'll say, a period of the recession, we weren't cutting back expenses quick enough, so our fund balance dwindled. So now we're still kind of recycling and making up for that. So we do believe that once our fund balances get close to 22 percent, 24 percent in there, that we'd be able to discontinue the borrowing. We actually have a future slide, too, in this presentation that'll tell you about the cost of that interest expense that deals with the TANs borrowing. So our goal is to minimize our future borrowing. We just happen to benefit from low interest rates when we had to borrow a lot. Right now, as the interest rates are climbing, our expenditure would actually be doubling if we were borrowing at the same rate, because that interest rate is increasing by double, you know, that double time. So if 1 percent going to 2 percent, et cetera. So if you have any other questions on that as I go through, let me know. But I wanted to kind of go through some of our ongoing concerns with the district. So certainly protested taxes and the settlements are a huge concern for us. We have no control over them. We have no control over the settlement of that, too. So St. Louis County takes care of whatever settlements or bargaining they can from their end. What's not settled between them and the taxpayer goes to the state tax commission. So they are not necessarily always to the benefit of the taxing entities. Over the past several years, we have paid back settlements totaling more than $12 million. So, and we've seen that in the loss in our revenues. This year, we had $44.8 million that was paid under protest, so we're not receiving that in a timely basis. We're part of a friendly lawsuit that Webster Grove School District annually does, and we don't receive those funds essentially until May or June. So it kind of hurts part of our cash flow, but that $44.8 million in tax revenues go to the state tax commission then to be settled. So we know that most times, we wouldn't have the full liability to pay back the $44.8 million, but we most likely have to pay back a portion of that based on the settlements. We also know our VST tuition is going to vary. We know that based on the agreement, eventually, the Vic Corporation, Voluntary Inter-District Choice Corporation, is essentially going to phase out in future years. So we're going to have a gradual loss in enrollment from there, and then the gradual loss in revenue as well. The Scott Trade acquisition by TD Ameritrade, we don't know the exact impact that'll have on our financial institution tax or our county stock tax, but we know that it should have some impact, because we know some of the services are actually moving to Omaha, and some of the services are remaining here. You know, and we're always focused on the ongoing budget battles at the state level, too, where we don't receive very much from the formula. We receive about $562 per weighted ADA, so weighted average daily attendance. Our largest impact is from the transportation budget, and where they take away from the transportation budget, they never seem to ever add back in. So I believe in total, we receive about 30 percent funding for transportation. And we have the increased cost in transportation of students, of our students in transition. So we are working with Charlotte EJ and her group to look at a possible new model of what that'll look like for Parkway, you know, and looking into the possibility of having a van and a Parkway driver picking up some of these students versus the cab delivery service that is currently being contracted. Also, our federal funding and programs. DESI actually discovered a formula calculation earlier this year, so next year, we have a different distribution of our federal funds by building, so that's part of our staffing allocation changes that have taken place. We also have the low capital projects fund balance, so not the fund balance from the bond issue, but the regular fund balance in capital projects that is there for our purchase of buses. Buses are not paid for or purchased out of bond funds, they're from the capital projects fund, and then also larger equipment like server equipment, et cetera, is purchased from there. So in ongoing years, future years, we're transferring funds from the general to the capital projects in order to meet those demands. And we budget and analyze the budget on an ongoing basis. We continually update for the future years based on the information we receive, and we're charged with not being too optimistic or too conservative. We really need to base it on historical averages in order to try and meet and hit our targets. If we look at our future five-year forecasting in revenues, we're using our same targets for CPI growth and for our collection rates. As you can see, we have gradual growth overall that we're estimating in our revenues, so about 1.45 to 1.5 percent growth each year. This is taking into effect also some of the lower revenues from the VST tuition, et cetera, into here. When we look at our operating expenditures, we're looking at that stable growth in salaries and benefits, so we do know that we have an increase in the future enrollment, but it shouldn't cause huge spikes in FTE. We also have a steady growth in our benefit projections as well. We are holding fast part of our purchase services and supplies. We do know that with our ongoing bond projects, a lot of those are energy-efficient focused, so we should have continued savings in our energy services, but we also have our energy companies such as Lucley Gas, Ameren, that are increasing their rates. So at times, those offset each other. When we place those together, we do meet our target for a 0.25 percent growth. That's with really maintaining our expenditures where they're at, so not a lot of flexibility or not a lot of growth outside of that salary and benefit number. Usually, when we talk about adding a new program or adding a new initiative, where are you going to get the money from? That's usually our first question, like, okay, so what are we doing now that we can discontinue so that we have the funding for that? Because currently, we don't have sources of new revenue that are possibilities. As you can see, in the fiscal year '22, in order to meet the 0.25 percent growth, we do have to come up with an expenditure savings of $2 million. So we know this is future. By then, we may catch up with that with revenue growth, or we'll have some time to make some expenditure cuts along the way, too. So now for, this is Dr. Marty's, one of his most favorite slides.
Mark Stockwell's invention.
No, Byron Woodall created this.
Well, Mark cut the curve.
Okay, yes, he started the upward trend. You are absolutely right. So as you can see, the blue bar represents our operating revenues, the red bar the expenditures, the green line is our fund balance percentage. As you can tell, in those years that the red bar was higher than the blue bar, the fund balance dipped, and dipped quickly, like a ski slope. So now it is our work to gradually grow that fund balance in order, you know, really, our main target is to have enough funding in that operating fund balance so that we can discontinue our borrowing each year for our TANs, that we have year-round cash balances.
And while Patty says, I like this bar, for those who've been around for a while, but for new board members, we will not prepare a budget that is high, we're spending more money than we're, our revenue, so we're going to, we're going to bring a balanced budget to you and at the same time increase fund balance. That's our commitment. So as Patty says, as she forecasts, we may have some struggles to do that at times if the revenue is not growing, but we will not bring you budgets that this board might have seen, and I don't want to be critical of past administrations of boards, but you will not see a budget that, you know, will have that red line exceeding the blue line.
Very good. Yeah, but we're actually bound by board policy to do so. This is one of the graphs I referred to earlier. This is the trajectory, the blue bar is the fund balance, so starting in 2015 when we initiated the fund balance growth policy. And then the red bar represents our TANs borrowing, so the amount that we borrow each year. So as that fund balance is growing, our need for borrowing, the amount that we borrow each year decreases. The impact of that, then, of course, is the lower interest rates that we will have to pay, offset by, of course, greater interest revenue, because we have higher fund balances in order to invest and receive. So the blue line represents the fund balance with growth, and then the red represents the fund balance if we did not grow. The green bars represents the difference in the fund balance because of the interest that we are saving, plus the interest we're receiving based on building our fund balance. Any questions? Kevin's like, where do I begin, right? It's a lot.
You're amazing.
Aw, thank you. I have wonderful assistant here, too, with the Director of Finance. He does an amazing job.
So can you just, for the benefit to of the new board members, explain what, excuse me, the processes from here? We see we're in this work session, we have this budget, what next?
So now we build all the line item budgets. Essentially, from this document, I could build the budget message, because this is the overall view of all the components that are going into the budget. And now Brian and his department start preparing the detailed line item budgets, not only just by the summary object codes, but by the multiple object codes. So salary isn't just salary, but it's broken down between certified staff, classified staff, overtime, et cetera. Benefits are broken down by each individual benefit, whether it's health, dental, life, versus retirement, versus Medicare, versus OASCI, versus workers' comp. And then the same thing for each of the other line items. Many of the spending line items, purchase service, the supplies, et cetera, are all in Munis currently, which is our financial system, and it's just regurgitating that information into our fund reports. So we have four funds that we report on based on the Missouri Accounting Manual. So we have a general fund, a special revenue fund, or teachers' fund, it's also known as, our debt service, and our capital projects. So we essentially report in the budget book all of our numbers every which way we can, so by function, by object, and by fund. And so we really spend a lot of time to analyze those and bring those numbers into a final document. And then we also have historical comparisons of those same budget codes, and then future projections by the summary codes. So it's like, oh, it's 130 pages?
Yeah.
So, lots of paper.
So have all the other administrators or building administrators brought their budgets to you already, and that's what we're looking at?
Mm-hmm. That is all included.
Okay.
That is correct. And then anything that is additions from their norm, we discuss in Superintendent's Action Team as well. We make sure that any additions are aligned to our mission and our strategic goals.
I think it's safe to say that budget cycles, we used to say that budget cycles were like January to, you know, the board approved. Now it's really a year-long process, because there's adjustments along the way. We start, you start analysis, you may report, I think your first report to the board was, what, October maybe, or September, October?
Absolutely. So once we close a year, we start with the analysis of the current year and then start planning for the future year as well. So next month, we should have some spring budget adjustments as well. So looking at this current year, there may be some items that we have to either move by fund, or the projections have changed during the year, so we'll have a spring budget adjustment also.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian and Patty. Look forward to the evolution of the budget and adopting it in June.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 15.0 call for a special meeting, we have none. 16.0, the next scheduled closed session will be held on Wednesday, May 9th, at 6:00 p.m. at Parkway Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. We do not have a recess, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We, at this time, will now adjourn to closed session.